All you and you can do it for me.
Thank you for all the help that you've given this great county. And please help us tonight to conduct this meeting in a way that is befitting to you.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands.
One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. I would like to thank all the board members that are here tonight. We have six out of seven, so that's real good. Mr. Huggins was unable to be with us. We appreciate the Evelyn and Jan for their hard work putting this on and replacement of Karen. Hopefully she'll get well soon and be back. We appreciate our attorney, Mr. Howard Dykes. Planning Department, Mr. Carpenter and a new employee, I believe is Kelly Frymire. Is this your first meeting here? So, welcome to the CBA meeting. We appreciate you being part of the staff. Do we have any announcements needs to be made at this time?
Uh, no new announcements, uh, Mr. Chair regarding any of the legal matters. They're all still pending. We haven't had any new, uh, orders issued by the court on, uh, the pending appeal.
Hasn't he been about a year since he's added them?
Yeah, some are, uh, right out of year.
Requesting another judge?
Uh, probably not. There's but two more up there, uh, that could do it. And, um, I mean, it's just one of those that, as I said before, I think because he doesn't come from a land use background or, you know, uh, that's not his strong point. I think he just takes a, an extra amount of time to make sure he's getting them right. So, uh, we have had a couple and I mean, they've been favorable thus far. Uh, we're just waiting on the others to cut through.
Does he have a time factor?
No, there's, there's really nothing in the rules that require him to rule within a certain amount of time. Uh, I mean, we could try to push the issue, but oftentimes when you do that, the concern is you don't want to alienate yourself with the judge. So, um, and, and I've spoken with, uh, Ms. Noes regarding those matters. And I think, you know, she's mentioned to me from the county's perspective, it's, you know, we'll just kind of let the court have its time.
Has anything else? First item on the agenda tonight? No. We do that at the end. We're not going to take up these people's valuable time while we sit there and vote on the minute. That comes at the end.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Matt Carpenter for the Planning Department. Uh, first item on our agenda tonight, the Seacrest Pizza LLC, six O P S R X Director Determination Letter Appeal. Um, we have a request to continue it to July twenty-five. Uh, we have actually, uh, reached a settlement on this particular case, subject to approval by the owner, which is going to allow them to get where they were trying to get with a modification of their development order.
Are you still need to, we're going to table this for the June or is that going to go away?
Uh, we expect a withdrawal.
So you, do we need to table it or not table it?
Um.
Not here, so we should table it.
Motion to continue it till the-
Motion to continue it to July twenty-five in the event.
The twenty-five or twenty-seven? On our notes it says twenty-seven.
Um.
I mean, whichever, twenty-five, okay.
Motion?
Make a motion to continue the Seacrest Pizza LLC appeal to the July twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen meeting. At five P M. at this location.
Second.
Aye.
Okay, what about the second one?
Uh, second one, the James A. Cochrane Revocable Trust variance. Uh, at the last meeting, uh, you approved a request to continue to allow us to research whether or not this qualified as a pre nineteen seventy-five subdivision regulation lot of record. Uh, we were able to confirm that and based on the size being less than the minimum lot size required by the seventy-five subdivision regulations, which was ten thousand square feet, uh, this lot qualifies for five-foot side setbacks, uh, as a non-conforming lot of record pre nineteen seventy-five. Uh, and as such, they don't require the variance.
Does he get his money back?
Yes, sir. Um.
Hasn't that an error on the planning department? Didn't they caught that?
Uh, the attorney representing them should have caught this.
It might be, county also shares some responsibility for not having the knowledge to help hold them.
I don't know that we did. Um, and this is not something that would be commonly available to any planner.
There's not a lots of record though, that is.
There's a whole lot of lots of record and they applied based on the present deed without, uh, indicating they were applying for five-foot side setbacks. They applied with seven and a half foot side setbacks and that's what we approved. And as you recall, the field determination of the survey was that the lot was not fifty feet wide. It was forty-seven and change.
I just, I just, you know. I am very thankful that, that, first of all, I got something to say. When Mark Davis became the county attorney, he put in to have a magistrate to do this meeting instead of the citizen. And I was objected considerably because I think the citizen board behaves a lot more friendly to the citizens of Walton County than the magistrate. I think that the gentleman that was here last time, I think his attorney would tell you that that was a pretty good discussion. But in those discussions, thank goodness that we have members that is a part of the, the citizens and thank goodness Jeff picked it up. Cause I didn't. I should have, but he picked it up and he saved, could have saved that gentleman a whole lot of problems. But I think this board functions better than a magistrate. And I just thank the goodness that a magistrate is not sitting here and we have people like Jeff to serve on this board and other members here. So that's something I think benefited his, the gentleman.
And I think you make a very good point. The collective knowledge of all the people sitting on this board, uh, does serve a public purpose.
When he started getting my book and started looking, I didn't know what he's looking for, but you're doing a good job. And I think you need to be commended and I think the attorney should take and make sure that the gentleman thanks you for and gives you a couple of weeks free stay and then. I charge them a dollar. But I'm glad that one got worked out because that was a tough one. Just a minute, we'll give you a chance to thought. Anything we need to do on that?
Uh, I, I mean, if they would, if the variance request has been withdrawn, you know, because it's been resolved, I don't think there's any action by the board that needs to be taken.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. You can come up.
My name is Larry Fine and I'm the neighbor to the house in connection with the Cochrane case. And I'd like to read a statement that I've prepared. Tonight was an important night for all the people in Walton County. For the county has determined the future of construction building for years or decades to come. Case of James A. Cochrane Trust concerning his house at one eighty Sandtrap Road in Miramar Beach. It is said to the world that you can build a house not in accordance with county ordinances, but rather do as you damn well please and then be forgiven by the county planning commission or board of zoning adjustments. The violations that occurred in this matter were numerous. They encountered the so-called inability of experienced builders to properly read a survey. Not once and certainly not twice, but perhaps even three times. They involved untruthfully certifying on this site plan appli- application. They involve false responses to the questionnaire submitted by Mr. Cochrane that stated that no one has been harmed by his actions. It is even possible that this has occurred more than once. While even at last month's board meeting, your chairman so eloquently stated the seriousness of the matter, chastising Mr. Cochrane to the extent that he was, his face was so red that his blood pressure must have gone through the roof. More than once did the chairman state that it was impossible to believe that not only Mr. Cochrane, but his contractor had not known that the lot was forty-seven feet, not the fifty feet stated in the deed. It was clear that they had to have known, or certainly should have known as experienced builders, the actual size of the lot as well as the ordinances related to required setbacks. Yet they signed an affidavit as such when they submitted the plan for the house on the site plan showing seven and a half foot setbacks. They had to have known then. Furthermore, they were totally ignorant of the possibility of being grandfathered to allow retroactively five-foot setbacks, but more of that later. Even if you were to have given them the benefit of the doubt there, Mr. Cochrane approached me at my mailbox last fall and said to me, quote, "There is a problem with my survey." Did he approach the county officials then? No. Instead, he did the wrong thing, the illegal thing and just went ahead hoping to get away with it. And he almost did. Applicable officials did not look into the application properly unless they caught it after the house was substantially underway. And Ms. Schimmel, I think that's her name, certainly didn't catch it for she advised this board to approve the zoning variance, relying solely on Mr. Cochrane's answers. I am grateful that your chairman saw what my lawyer and I had seen. I was grateful that he asked me if I wanted the house to be demolished. I am proud that my answer was to state that perhaps Mr. Cochrane and I could reach some accommodation regarding the reduction of value to my house as a result of this. But Mr. Cochrane was not forthcoming and I will suffer a substantial loss in the value of my house. The April meeting, it was agreed that all construction would be halted until this matter was resolved. Once again, Mr. Cochrane snubbed his nose at the board by allowing some work to continue. Examples of this include installations of showers based on comments from workmen when I asked what he was doing in the house, installations of gas lines after we told gas workers that no work was permitted, installation of an electric box on the side of the house, what appears to be some exhaust piping come out of the side of the house in multiple places, installation of substantially all of brick pavers in the driveway. While we were out of town, two neighbors sent me text messages indicating work was being done. One said, quote, "It looks like an army," end quote. We have a number of pictures of trucks outside the house which were available. There is now available online an advertisement regarding rental opportunities for this house. It is described as having eight bedrooms as permitted and two bunk rooms sleeping eighteen people, but possibly not requested in the permit. I don't know the requirements for this, but are bunk rooms that sleep eight and ten people respectively not considered bedrooms? And if so, would failure to notify the county be a significant omission? And would this not affect parking requirements? So here we are tonight, the fourth time we've had to be here. And it was an important night because you were to send a message, one that would have been heard for years to come. All of this was unduly influenced by the, uh, actions of Mr. Chick at the last meeting. When he gave a lesson of a possible way out for Mr. Cochrane, I believe his action was shameful, unethical and possibly illegal. As I believe the job of this board is to enforce the applicable laws. I've been able to under, unable to find anywhere that says you should be helpful or give advice to an applicant. I've spent a lot of my grandchildren's college money on this. If I could find a lawyer willing to work on a contingency basis, I would seriously consider legal action against all of you. Contractors and property owners, you don't have to worry. Just do what you please and we will let you off. To hell with our laws and regulations and to hell with the neighbors whom you will harm. Do not worry. We will help you get out of whatever mess you create and know how many times you are untruthful to us. Could have stood up and implemented the laws of this county. Instead, you provided him with the out to save his investment and ruin the property value of others. Law says there's no way out for self-imposed violations and there was no error here, not in conception and not last fall and not now. You should have made him tear the house down. It would have taken courage, but that is what I believe you swore to follow the law when you took whatever oath you took when appointed to this board. So I say to all of you, shame on you. This is a shameful, disgusting, and yet in Walton County, a predictable outcome. I thank you for hearing me, but respectfully ask that you reconsider your decision.
In the Walton County Comprehensive Plan and the Walton County Plan Development Codes, that's what we go by. These are the books we go by. Jeff got the books and he found in this code where it says it's allowed to be there with the five foot if it's meets the nineteen seventy-five. His attorney, if we would have approved it, you could have challenged it. But his attorney would have found this. If we would have-
His attorney-
Hang on a minute. You had your say. Now I got my say. In this code book, it tells us what we can and what we can't do. If we made him tear that house down and his attorney found the language, the county would have been responsible for it. I don't appreciate you attacking the board and I sure don't appreciate you attacking him. Because I think there was discussion, good discussion, thanks to you and your attorney, that I believe tonight, and I say it, there was the intent that I didn't appreciate being intended and if I had to vote, I was going to vote to tear it down. But you don't have the right to get mad with this board whenever we go by the code. And all we have to do is follow this code and we can't step beside that. So you need to respect the code and if you don't like it, take it up with the county commissioners because this is what we go by.
Not suggesting necessarily that it was this board.
You did. You did and you attacked the board member and I don't appreciate it.
Well, I, excuse me. I think that, I think that Mr. Chick was terribly wrong. I do. I think terribly wrong.
It's in, it's in the code.
I understand that, sir. And anybody that looks at the code has the right to find it.
This board has the right-
I understand that this board never acted on this. I understand that from Mrs. Schimmel, that the head of the planning, whatever, made this decision retroactively.
It's not retroactive.
And what this says is anybody, anybody can file, anybody can file an application and get it through because it's real simple. They said they don't even look at it. They just take the certification and move on. That's what this gentleman said last week.
We understand you being here, but let me tell you something. Our attorney, we have to go by the code. This board has the right to use the knowledge that comes from these books. We have to base our decision on this code. I appreciate him looking it up. I appreciate him because it kept us out of a lawsuit at the appeal process being denied. We have to go by this book. Now, you should have known, in my opinion, and I don't know, I don't talk to these people, but I don't think he had a Chinaman chance in continuing that house. I think we would have made him tear it down. But you don't have the right to come here and attack this board. And I don't appreciate it.
Can I, can I just say it should have never gotten to this point? He had a right when he purchased the property and designed the home to use the five-foot setbacks from the day he started designing his home. He should have never been given a stop work order. He should have never had to have come to the zoning board of adjustments in the first place. He had a right based on the land development code to use five-foot setbacks from the day he purchased the property. So I was not bailing him out retroactively. He should have never been here in the first place. And I feel bad for you and everybody else that had to endure that situation, but I'm not bailing him out. I'm just pointing out the fact that he had a right that he did not know he had and you didn't know that he had. And it's unfortunate that you disagree, but I didn't retroactively bail anybody out. These people had a right that they didn't know and I brought it to everybody's attention and it resolved the conflict. And I believe a great injustice would have been done without people knowing the facts. So.
Well, sir, I, I would just submit to you that I, you asked me at the last meeting what kind of setbacks I had and I didn't remember, but after you asked, I went back and looked. My site plan called for five-foot setbacks. When I built that house, I didn't even know what that meant. But my builder looked it up. He knew to look it up. Their people should have known to look it up too. So you have the right to feel the way that you do and, and I understand. You will never convince me that they would have ever known had you not told them and that by doing so, you caused me substantial damage. Because it was ver- it was very clear. It was very clear that he was at significant risk to tear down that house and he would have come to some sort of accord with me as you not told him about that.
But you have five-foot setbacks and you're saying that he doesn't have the right to the same setbacks that you're entitled to.
I'm saying he didn't, I'm saying that he didn't ask for that in a timely fashion and would have never asked for that.
You have a five-foot setback.
Yes, sir.
And you don't want your neighbor to have that privilege?
No, 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 no. That's not what I said.
I tell you what, we've heard all we got to hear from you. Thank you. We appreciate it.
You have a nice day.
Mr. Harold Kelly's Garage. I think this is the first time. This is, this is the first time.
Uh, thank you. I want to look at it from the front.
Yeah, that looks a little better.
Aye.
Sir, I'm going to need to swear you in.
Oh, my goodness, that's alive. Boy, you let me slip on that one. Anybody here tonight anticipating speaking for this board, please raise, raise your, raise your right hand.
You need to stand and raise your right hand, please. Do you all swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and other than the truth to help you God? I'm going to need you to.
I, I do.
Thank you, sir.
What's your name?
My name is Harold Kelly.
Kelly, what do you want?
Okay, uh, my, my nickname's Hal, so if you want to call me Hal or anybody else says something about Hal, that's Harold and Hal are the same guy. And my wife Julie is the one that brought this up, so. Anyway, uh, I want to thank you for the opportunity to view my, uh, variance request with you. Uh, my wife Julie's been the biggest contributor on our side for this project. And thanks to the fine people you've got in your planning and building department, they've helped us get to the point where we are. We bought our home seventeen years ago as a vacation and planned retirement home. It worked out well until last October when it became a full-time restaurant, uh, a resident retirement home. When our, our house was for part-time vacation or rental use, you can sort of get by without a garage. But when living there full-time, a garage becomes more of a necessity. I'm a do-it-yourselfer for nearly everything that goes on around the house. I do yard work, landscaping, tree trimming, fence building, fence cleaning, fence painting, paver reset, sprinkler systems, weeding, feeding, pest control. And in the, or outside the house, I do pressure washing, cleaning, painting, washing windows, repairing porch railings, repairing windows. And inside the house, I do remodeling, carpentry, painting, plumbing, appliance repairs and repair window frames and cells. To do these kinds of things, I need step ladders, extension ladders, trimmers, shovels, rakes, paint, paintbrushes, hammers, saws, wrenches, chemicals, fertilizers. And I need a place to put these items. And inside the house is not the correct place. I need a garage. Luckily, we've never had a, been hit by a hurricane, but we've had some warnings and some evacuations. I board up to leave and I board down when I return. I have a generator in case I need a, I have power outages. I need a place to put some plywood and a generator. And the house is not the correct place. I need a garage. All the items that I'm trying to find a place for should not and cannot be kept outside and be secure. We all regularly read and hear about thefts of tools and materials at construction sites. I've had bicycles stolen out of my driveway both day and night. Bicycles belong inside the house or belong inside, but not inside the house. I need a garage. People have told me that you live in Florida. You don't need a garage for a car in Florida. I say, what about pine tree sap, pine pollen, pine straw, pine cones, oak tree leaves, palm tree seeds, palm tree fronds and squirrels in the engine? You either have to wash your car every day or have a compromised paint job or stop up the drain holes that's, or the, the, or drain the drain holes out, clean them out where the water goes down or you're going to have rust start. It's also a security issue. I had one entry and another attempt. Car belongs inside, but not in the garage. Be belong, the, the car belongs inside, but not in the house. I need a garage. Thank you for listening to my, I need a garage variance plan. And I have technical stuff if you need any of that.
On the back, on the back of your house, how much distance do you have? What is that, a porch? And you have something on front of your garage? How many distances? What distance is that?
Where, where? From the, from the back of the house to the-
House to the garage?
But from the house to the, the planned garage is twelve feet, six inches.
You can't move that garage up right off the back of your house?
You can move it forward. Uh, the problem there is that if you get it forward, you've still got to stay straight forward where it is because you can't get off to the left to go in the door.
Johnson? I was actually, I have a question for you.
Okay.
Presently with the way you're looking at structuring it, you have to either back all the way out from the garage to the road or you would have to back all the way in from the road to the garage.
Right.
You turn your garage ninety degrees, rotate it. Now you could actually perform a three-point turn after pulling in directly and pull out as well as pull in. And you would fit your garage floor plans twenty feet by twenty feet. You would fit within your setbacks.
But if I fit within the setbacks, then the garage is almost right against the house. You got, I got thirty-five feet.
That's correct. After, almost thirty-six.
And if I use twenty of that, I've got fifteen feet left and the setback is, what, five? So the garage is, uh, ten.
It would be very close to the house. You might lose-
Thirty-five, I'd have, uh, if you give me five and I got me and five would be twenty-five. It'd be ten feet from the house. And it would cover the entire, it would basically be covering the entire backyard.
Well, that's, you're, the width of your garage is actually sixteen feet. You do have a four-foot porch.
Correct.
Um, you may not, you may not be able to include the four-foot porch or all four feet of it, but you'd still get the sixteen by twenty-foot garage if you did rotate ninety degrees. And I think you'd have a better traffic flow coming in and out.
The, uh, one of the main issues that I did at- The, uh, one of the main issues that I did it this way was because the, well, there was a couple of things. Number, number one, it's gonna be easier to go straight in and back straight out, in my opinion, than to come in and turn to come in and then back out and turn to go out. I don't think that is gonna be very easy for my wife to do. So that's gonna be a pretty tight turn.
What road are you on?
I'm on Cassine Way.
What's your, uh, what's your right-of-way? What's the right-of-way there?
Eighteen.
Your, your, uh-
Street is-
Your pavement right next to your property? So you'd be backing right out into the yard?
Uh-
I mean, the road?
Well, uh, yes, and that's the way we have to do now. I back out into the, into the, the street now, and the street is eighteen feet.
You, you got an eighteen-foot street, which is a two-way?
Two-way.
Two-way street, and you back out into, how much traffic do you have in there? Is it a county road, is it a private road?
It's a private road. Well, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a street that, uh, is in a subdivision.
Many houses is in the subdivision?
There's about, what is there, seventy? Seventy-eight, about seventy-eight houses.
Just looking at this available building envelope on your lot, you have a nice big lot. And the placement of the house is not ideal for adding an accessory structure, but there is adequate space to create a functional garage and storage structure behind the house. So I'm not seeing hardship that needs a variance to put the garage over the rear and the side setbacks in the corner of the lot.
The other issue I was concerned about is they're going to, if you, if you move it in the back like you're talking about, there's an additional driveway area that has to be put in, and doing it the way that you're talking about, I've got about a sixty-six percent coverage on my property of buildings and pavers. That's one of the things I want to get away from. Takes up, it takes up a great deal more of my lot, and it, and it requires a lot more coverage with buildings and pavers, and that's kind of gets into taking out a whole lot of vegetation and trees that I didn't want to do.
I think the board is not real favorable to cutting fifteen feet down to three feet, and then you asking seven-and-a-half foot for two feet. The board is trying to work with you and try to figure out, instead of just saying, "No, we're not gonna do this," but you asking to reduce that rear setback twelve feet, that's gonna leave three feet in the back. And you asking the side setback to go from seven point five to two, so you asking for five point five. Now, if we can do this, you know, you got six members, you need four votes. You can do this two ways. You can stay with your, your, uh, request as you presented it, or you could listen to the board members making suggestions that'd be more out to get everyone to agree to, to go from a fifteen to a ten, or fifteen to eight, and then you wouldn't need the side setback. You know, that may be something that you get, and if you, if we say no tonight, then you have to redesign and come back anyway. But we need a little help here if you can give it to us.
Uh, I understand where you're coming from.
Now, if you want to take this and think about it, let us finish the discussion. If you want to take and think about it and come back in the next meeting and tell us why that won't work.
Well, the-
Does that move on the, on the model?
Yeah, right.
Can you bring it up here?
Yeah.
I just, I have concerns. You have the eighteen-inch overhang plus gutters that you're gonna need for the, for the stormwater.
You need to state your name for the record. Okay, now go ahead.
Well, looking at the roof plan, you have eighteen-inch overhangs plus your gutters, you're gonna need to meet your stormwater. Have a two-foot setback with a gutter, when you add that to the edge of the roof, with your fascia's gonna be right on the property line. Pretty-
But, but, uh, the thing that, um, that makes it a little bit different than what you, uh, might think is that that back, uh, property line is a fence. Beyond that, there's a four-foot easement. That's a, that's a, uh, public walkway. And then another fence. And the property that's on the lot behind me then is another, well, the closest building which is theirs is an outfielding, outbuilding is, uh, I can tell you that. Rear. Ten feet, six inches from the nearest building behind me. Even though, even though I'm two, uh, three feet from the property line, the nearest building is still ten feet, six inches away.
So you have a, a car to scale that we could try this out?
No, I didn't, I thought about that, but I didn't-
Maybe a Matt Spots?
Yeah.
No, it's, it's not that hard, if that is to scale.
It's gonna be very difficult to back out. Because you have twenty-three feet for the garage and seven-and-a-half for the setback on a fifty-foot lot. It only leaves twenty feet to back out.
And turn.
Out, turn.
Your car, by the time you get it out, there wouldn't be any driveway left to make the cut.
And you'd take a whole lot of pavers to do that, too.
And then there, like, right now, I drive and I park right here. And I don't have any backing up, and I wouldn't have to go back in that much more.
But, you know, if you were to request a variance to move this over, that would be more desirable than- What about pulling this up?
Go, or Jeff, can one of y'all turn your mic towards her, 'cause we're not gonna hear her.
Oh, the, um, one of the things that's so difficult when you start moving it back here is you have, you take all this vegetation out, and you have all of these pavers.
Center up over there is the, all the board members can see that. Over there, right over there.
Everybody see it now?
You just set it there on that table mount, and then-
So if you have it, if you have it back here on the side, and you're coming in the side of the house, and, and it's over here, you're gonna have all this covering, all the ground, this would be all pavers, and then this would cover all the rest of our lot and take out all of the trees. And that's, you know, we already have a lot of places here where there's water that can run off into other people's yards and around in there, and if you cover, we just don't like covering all that area with, with the building and with all that, because you don't, you don't have the vegetation to have a place for it to drain. Back there, that's one of our concerns, and taking out all the trees. How many trees there?
Were you only, you mentioned earlier you had a bunch of equipment. Are you gonna be pulling a trailer in there?
Say that again?
I, he stated earlier-
I have a lot of equipment, but I don't have a trailer.
Oh, no.
I have a pickup.
What size pickup you got?
Devil A S ten.
Small truck?
Yes, sir.
We're gonna give you the opportunity to come back up after everybody else has had the opportunity to speak, so just, anybody, any other questions? Anybody in the audience would like to speak? County?
Commissioners-
We're gonna make her, we're gonna make her get up, just hang on. State your name for the record.
I will. Commissioners, I'm Mitchell Taub, I'm president of the Cassine Village HOA. And I'm here to support the Kellys and their endeavor. I can tell you that our architectural review committee, the chairman is here with me tonight, takes these matters extremely seriously. To give you a couple of examples, a house is being built on a piece of property that had a huge, beautiful oak tree. Even though they had no jurisdiction to tell the realtor, potential buyers, and the builder that they had to keep the tree, they stood fast, and the house being built on that piece of property, uh, is being built behind the tree. The ARC held their ground, even though legally anyone could have cut it down, it was not within their jurisdiction, but they felt it was important that the tree remain. Another example of how our ARC is extremely aggressive, another homeowner, new homeowner, thought that he could build a fence, thought he could build a shower enclosure without ARC approval. He went ahead and did it. The ARC informed the board. The owner was fined thirty-two hundred dollars and required to remove the fence and the shower enclosure, which both occurred. The fine was paid, the fence and the shower enclosure were removed. Our ARC is extremely aggressive. From a personal standpoint, when I went to build my house, the front of our house is on a curved street. Needless to say, the house is straight, and when we got to the corner of the porch, it overextended the variance. They came back to me and said, "Mr. Taub, if you want to build that porch in that house, you're gonna have to change your design." And I had to change my design. So they are very aggressive. Matter of fact, uh, yesterday, they were on another lot. Uh, they've just received the plans. They were over there ensuring that the, um, trees, that, uh, the owner has, uh, spent ten years trying to ensure that they're going to stay and keep them alive, that the builder is going to keep them there, and the homeowner is going to build the house behind those trees. So when our ARC approves something, it's not just a rubber stamp. Now, I understand your position, I truly do. Um, if you look at that piece of property and you walk back there, I don't know if anyone will ever notice that there is a garage built back there. Um, one of the other luxuries we have in Cassine Village is, unlike a lot of the developments on thirty A where the houses are so close you can share the toilet paper and your morning newspaper, um, we have a fairly good distance between our homes, and that's what's made our neighborhood so popular. Um, putting this proper, putting this structure in the back corner of that property is really not going to affect anybody's space. Um, because there is a walkway back there, and frankly, I don't know if anyone's ever used that four-foot walkway. The last time I saw people in the walkway was when we, as homeowners, painted it a few months ago. Um, there is a structure on the other side of that walkway that almost comes right to the walkway as well. So it's not like, oh, this structure's going to be out there by itself in a sore thumb, there's already another structure there, and it will almost mirror the existing structure. So I, I truly understand your position, and I truly, you know, want Mr. Kelly to get what he needs, because I can tell you, those of us who live there full-time, including myself, if I had the druthers, in hindsight, I would have put a two-car garage at my house when I built it. But a lot of the homeowners who live here permanently and who built from scratch to make it their permanent home, put garages when we built. So, uh, again, I'm just stating from the standpoint of the HOA and from the ARC, neither one of us are against what Mr. Kelly's trying to do.
How many peoples, how many houses is in your development?
There's about seventy-eight.
Has everybody been notified?
Everyone within three hundred feet, according to Mr. Kelly.
Has anybody complained? Does the neighbor, the neighbors that are next door, they complain, but you think we should agree with this?
I don't see any reason not to.
Then, and then when those people in South Walton pops up and complains, we're gonna say, "You, you told us to." You okay with that?
No, I'm, I'm just saying that, given where it is and given the circumstances, I, I can see your point. He's pushing, pushing the outer edges of acceptability.
Let me ask you this, why did you make a guy tear a fence down? You want him to build within two feet, and that's okay? Because he can't ever get in there and land it down.
The reason we asked, the reason we required him to tear the fence down was, number one, he did not request permission to build the fence. Secondly, when he built it, he did not build it to the standards that we have in our HOA guidelines as to what a fence should look like. So with that in mind, we felt that the fence was put up without permission, the fence does not meet our guidelines at all. And just as a side note, when he was ha- having it torn down, he had two sixteen-year-olds out there tearing it down, the builder who was helping him get rid of it. And the sixteen-year-olds commented to me, "Uh, Mr. Mitch, who built this fence? This is the worst fence I've ever seen," and that's why we required it being torn down.
Appreciate it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Hang on a minute, hang on, anyone else? Okay, since she's sat down, you can just have it. Kelly, come up, introduce yourself.
Thank you, Kelly Freymeyer for the planning department. Um, I have a staff report with the exhibits, and the Kellys have, um, submitted a complete application, um, that's there for your review and the record.
Add entry to the record?
Yes, sir.
Exhibit. Hey. Is that all you have to say?
Yes, sir.
Do you think we should approve it? Are you against it?
I think that that's your call.
What's your recommendation? Vivian tells us how to vote. You're not gonna do that?
It, it is your decision to make. They have a complete application, and, uh, you're welcome.
I like your answer. Anyone else? Everybody's heard enough? Are you good? Most inclos- a public discussion? Wait a minute, do you have anything else to add? You don't want to change anything? You ready to roll the dice?
Kelly, he's speaking to you.
He's thinking.
Oh.
He's getting permission to get up and speak. He asked his wife, "Is it okay?"
Yes, I think in reality, if you look at all of the characteristics of where this is and what's involved in it, from environmental and, uh, location and a design standpoint, that this is as good as you're gonna get for putting a garage on this lot that meets the requirements of construction and environmental impact and, uh, site and distances that are acceptable by the HOA.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Most inclos- a public discussion. Second. Very good. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion, motion to approve as presented?
Waterman.
We got her to make a motion, she's coming out of that shell. Motion to approve as presented?
I would, uh, maybe like to add that if it ever got torn down or got, went away, that maybe it did vary slightly with it.
Why? Well, I tell you what, make the motion, then we discuss it, so make the motion.
It is. I can, okay, is that better? Alright, well, I'll just, let's see. I'll make a motion to approve the rear setback to, from fifteen feet to three feet, and the side setback on the south side from seven-and-a-half feet to two feet. Um, with the condition that, in the event that the house is destroyed along with the garage, build it back, variance would be then null and void at that point. They could rebuild everything, uh, meeting code.
Second. Have a motion, have a second.
Second for discussion.
I guess my question is, why does it change if, if the house is tore down, why does it revert back?
We need a second before we discuss it. If you agree with it- If you agree with it, second it, we discuss it, otherwise it's gonna close, it's gonna die for lack of a second. So we have a motion, do we have a second? Motion dies like a second. Have another motion.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
I have a motion to approve as presented, I have a second.
I'll second.
Now we can have discussion.
Well, I'm a little concerned about keeping the hot, keeping the county out of hot water. Or as you say, doesn't have to be within the subdivision, it could be anywhere, anyone in the local area that may object to this. To grant a variance, I have trouble seeing the real hardship. I am concerned if it could be redesigned in such a manner that even if the building, let's say if we applied for a two-foot setback or even a zero-foot setback on the north side, slid the building north, now you would have thirty feet for a three-point turn to back, to back a vehicle out. And you'd be granting a variance over on only one setback or maybe even a lesser on the rear. Not fifteen down to three, but say fifteen down to ten. I, I think you could come up with a potentially better design that would result in a lesser variance, if even one at all. I am. Well, I think it's good that the homeowners association is in agreement and approves, but that doesn't really alleviate our responsibility. I don't.
I personally think that there's nobody here complaining. There's seventy-some odd families in there supposedly and nobody's complaining, no objection. The county was not in opposition to it. There is some subdivisions that has zero lot line.
Right.
And does it meet all these specifications of hardship? When you take in hardship can be determined in a lot of ways, when you take in the, you know, the tree, sometimes trees is important, may not meet it. You may not agree with it. The environmental issues of turning it, is it a good idea? Yes, it's a good idea. But however, they didn't want to do that, so we gotta vote on what we, what we got before. The main thing is, there's nobody in opposition. The main thing is, nobody's filed a complaint. The main thing is, Matt Carpenter didn't jump up and down about it. I think it's something that we can do, is it something I really?
Are there not fire separation, minimum fire separation distances for structures, which is part of the reason why we have the five-foot setback in place?
That is part of that. I'm not sure that our separation would be a factor in this particular case.
Cause there's no immediately adjacent structure, but it prohibits the next-door neighbor from building.
It would impact that opportunity on the adjoining lot.
I would have concerns on.
No, 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 sir. It's closed, he said, he's done, it's settled with, we're not opening it back up.
So if we grant that variance, the neighbors forever impacted adjacency of, of that structure. And, and again, the gutter would be sitting directly on the property. So we're granting him a zero setback on the one side.
You talking about on the, on the two-foot?
But when you have an eighteen-inch overhang and you install a gutter, which is a six-inch half around, you wind up with a full twenty-four inches of coverage and a zero setback.
Are you saying that even if you requested?
Well, typically the county only allows an eighteen-inch overhang on a roof into a seven-and-a-half foot setback. This is an eighteen-inch overhang into a two-foot setback.
Have a smaller overhang, that would help you.
If the roof had been designed with more of a gable, so that you had a six-inch gable overhang instead of a tip, then we wouldn't be dumping water on the side and we would be pulling the roof farther away from the property line. Then we've added, you've added a porch onto the garage, which increases the non-conformity and setback, which I'm having a hard time understanding the function of that. There's, there's merit and need for the structure, but what they've asked for way more than I think is reasonable. And I would agree with Daryl, that there's another way that they can go about designing the garage and getting what they need without us having to structure all the way in the corner.
If you take and turn the garage, you have thirty feet, you said, to back up and turn?
You would still, if you had a, a variance to the setback on only one lot line, the north side.
Zero lot line or no?
Four-foot setback instead of a setback.
Correct.
That would give you a thirty-foot to turn.
You only need twenty-four.
Plus size vehicle.
That's, that's Walmart parking lot between the stripes.
Well, that ain't big enough. If you got a twenty-five-hundred sendicab, can you bring a truck around and turn it to the garage?
He's got an S-ten.
He's gonna trade it in when he gets his variance. So would it be big enough?
Maybe not with a seven-and-a-half to a four-foot setback, but if you're gonna grant that, grant seven-and-a-half to one foot.
Then you got the same impact as you do on the south side. With the, unless you decide, ask them to come back with a new designed roof that doesn't dump the water. So I mean, you're gonna impact one side or the other, but you're not impacting the back.
Right, that's correct. You wouldn't necessarily have to impact boat as much.
I think the impacts are pretty significant.
So you don't care about, you don't care about the mice and the trees?
I'm, I'm concerned about the two feet, but then I think the A R C committee that they have has, has laid the options there and they, they would rather him put it in that corner than they had take up all of his vegetation in his backyard essentially, where the footprint is gonna add more pavers and, and less, it's gonna have more impervious surface because.
Impervious surface would be the thing, I mean, he's not.
Well, he is.
Add would be the driveways.
Well, the extra turnaround area and the extra driveway, so that, that would move it to the left and that would be that much less than it would have. But I do agree that the two-foot is, is extremely small. And it does concern me that it's right there on the line.
Well, we can, we can.
Most of the.
We can amend the motion and change it three-foot, four-foot, whatever you wanna do. You don't like his porch, then tear it down.
Well, it wasn't his porch, it was, it, it, it's a matter of driving the car into the garage. Because as it goes sideways across the.
Daryl, that's your expertise.
And that would be.
They can turn a little bit, they can angle.
Shifted it, oh, you mean go back and angle? You may could do that. We could maybe.
I would say that in most of the subdivisions that we do detached carriage houses and garages in, that they have a code mandated five-foot separation between the structures. And this is a twelve-foot separation, which is pushing it into that rear setback pretty significantly. You could reduce that twelve-foot setback, or the twelve-foot separation to a six-foot separation and have a nine-foot rear setback or even ten-foot setback.
Does he live with that, Daryl?
Yes.
So then, then a three?
And then they've got a ten-foot garage door, if you used a nine-foot garage door, you could shift the building another foot over from the, the property line. Roof would have a foot from the property line to the gutter.
Redesign the roof.
All I'm saying, they can keep the, the structure as designed, but relocate it.
There's a nine-foot door, is that pretty tight on a V here?
No, that's, that's an eight-foot standard, nine-foot's a little bit larger and ten-feet's huge.
Super duper for a truck.
That's why they fold back.
Okay.
I'm looking at this, there are pavers where she comes down the side of the house is already. Neighbor, to me, the neighbors ain't complaining about that, that's already into the variance right there, setback. Now the driveways don't matter. But.
I don't see a lot of objection from any of his neighbors or any of his people. That's my primary motivated force for going forward. Nobody's here complaining. The A R C is recommending it, the county has recommended it. I think he's got a claim for a hardship with regard to trying to live there full-time and needing some space to put some stuff. Wouldn't be my choice for how I would put the garage there.
Don't, you don't have necessary access to maintain the backside of the garage without being on somebody else's property.
The, you would be underneath the overhang of the eighteen-inch painted.
You can't, you can't paint, occupy the eighteen inches with your body.
Even hire a painter, they'll paint it.
Right, they.
From sideways or, I mean.
They'll put their scaffolding on the neighbor's lot.
Thinking. There's a fence though, probably.
There's, there's fence between those two.
Ms. Vicki, what's your thing?
The sidewalk, what you be concerned about? I sit back.
Mr. Henderson? I'm fixing. Let's see how this goes, I'm a little nervous.
Oh, you're not asking for a variance.
If we, if we call for a vote and if this thing does not get approved, then we're not gonna call for another vote. But we're going to amend the motion to change the building's structure to bring it up and move it over, we.
Well, I think, you know, for the, for the board's sake, you can, you know, you have a motion obviously that's been seconded, so you have a motion on the floor. The, the idea is, you know, you're gonna give him the, the envelope, you know, to where he can build his footprint and then he's either gonna have to make his design work, what he has, or he's gonna have to go back to the drawing board and, and figure something out. That, you know, that would be on the applicant to fit within that footprint.
It's okay if we denied it to come back and make another motion. I just have a problem with that. I have a problem, you know, continue trying to get motions to please, you know, I think we got a motion, we either needed to amend it or we need to vote on it and he can come back another day with a different design.
Well, I mean, he, he obviously can. I think to put some finality to it though, I would ask that the board, you know, either approve something or not.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, so.
Alright, here we go, we, we got a motion, we got a second. Y'all wanna discuss it anymore?
Just for clarification, can the motion be repeated?
Motion was to approve as, approve as design.
Yeah, so, so he, so the request, or the motion as I understood it would be the rear setback. If approved, would go from fifteen feet to three feet, the side setback on the south would go from seven and a half to two feet.
As, as presented, I follow, okay.
If I were to withdraw my motion, could we reopen public discussion and talk to the guy and say, ask him if he would be willing to?
The answer to that is no, but you can do this, you can rescind your motion, they can make the motion the way they want it done. We can approve it, he can live with it, not live with it. It's up to him, right, Mr. Dykes?
Correct. I mean, you're, again, you're setting the boundaries on, on footprint.
I'm going to rescind my motion then and then I will prefer that either Jeff.
Just on clear, so the, so you're requesting to withdraw the motion. Now, for Robert's rules, what that would require is if the board as a, as a body approves that. So does anyone object to Mr. McKinley withdrawing his motion?
I'm not gonna sit here all night with this now, now we gonna have to come up with something.
Cause if somebody does object, then you would have to, you'd have to take a vote on the motion that's on the floor.
No objection.
I would ask that either Mr. Burgess or Mr. K, make a motion.
You just hang on a minute. How you feel about it? You wanna re, would, would rescind it? You have objection to it? Mr. Henderson?
I have no objection to anyone withdrawing his motion.
You don't?
No.
Alright, so now. I need a motion.
I will make a motion. The siding of the garage be amended. So that we have.
Wait a minute. We need a motion in regards to the setback, just to him within that setback.
Correct. Right now, he's got fifteen and seven and a half, so you'd have to craft it.
Three, four, ten, nine, whatever you wanna do.
Right, I'm, I'm going to reduce the amount that the garage is encroaching into the setback. The distance from the garage to the rear property line. Think we should do that.
Okay, let's do that. The rear setback, he's asking for three-foot, what's your motion to give him?
My suggestion was gonna be to pull the garage towards the house. Two feet, so you have a ten-foot separation, you have a five-foot rear setback.
Five-foot rear setback, okay, the seven-and-a-half foot on the south side, what do you, what's, what he's asking for?
I think that should be three-foot.
Three-foot. So we have a motion that the rear setback could be five-foot, the side setback could be three-foot, is that correct? That's your motion? And I have a second. Anybody wanna second that?
Second.
Discussion? Pardon me? The motion, the rear setback, the rear setback will be reduced from fifteen feet to five feet. There's a ten-foot variance. The south setback will, from a seven point five to a three-foot, that'd be a five, a four point five request variance. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do you understand what we just did? You have to have five feet on the back, three feet on the side. We appreciate you, hope that that will work for you, okay? If you don't like it, you can file in the field thirty days after signing the final order. Look it up. We appreciate you coming, thank you. Next item on the agenda? Lot four, block B of Village of Whitecliffs, is this one of those rubber settlements that we need to do? You back with us tonight? You got a lot of opposition in the crowd.
Yeah, it's uncomfortable not having anybody.
I'm telling you.
What do you mean, nobody?
How about state your name, tell us what you want us to do, real briefly.
Alright, Stephen Tatum from Matthews and Jones, T A T U M. Like you said, it is Lot four, block B, Village of Whitecliffs. I think most of you have seen these before. It's a subdivision with a declaration and architectural guidelines recorded prior to nineteen ninety-six when the complian was passed. They provide very, you know, one-foot setbacks. very, you know, one-foot setbacks for your outbuildings and garages, um, up to, um, five feet on both sides. And, uh, there is, while I'm thinking of that, there's one problem in the staff report. If you look on the first page, it says five and a half feet for primary residents, and it really should be five feet. Um, and I've got a, a site plan here if you guys need to see that. I believe the staff report covered it well, she included all the documentation you needed to see. I do have a letter from, uh, Jeff Prescott, who is the architect for the Architectural Review Committee, and, uh, he says that the site plan does meet their guidelines. The actual house design has not been approved yet, but the footprint has been approved. Aside from that, unless you've got any questions for me, um...
Everyone familiar with this? This is, uh, where the, the Village of Whitecliff is able to operate within their rules and regulations up to the time Mark Davis, the queen lawyer, and his legal opinion was that he had to come and ask variances and instead of getting the latest variance, they make them spend the four hundred and fifty dollars and hire a lawyer and have ten thousand dollars in their request.
Not that much.
Not that much?
Not that much, I wish.
Gonna have any issues, any problems with it, I understand it, Jeff?
The rear setback's supposed to be four feet?
The rear setback is not supposed to be four feet, I don't believe, let me see.
Outbuilding, four foot.
Oh, the outbuilding, yes. Is that what, not what's in here?
This drawing is showing the outbuilding hanging over the four-foot setback.
All we're trying to do is to...
Let me see, this one you might be able to see better, I'm...
All we're trying to, all we're trying to do is to adopt given the variance that was granted to the Village of Whitecliff declaration and covers.
That's better.
Yeah, if you would. And this will be petitioner's exhibit one?
Yes.
Or applicant, however we do it, do we do applicant? Yeah, we do applicant.
Let's see what happens to, um, this...
Alright.
Thank you Kelly Frymire for the planning department. Um, it is a typo on the first page of the staff support. Other than that, the, um, application is a complete application.
Gonna give us no pointers?
No, sir.
Evidence?
I do, yes, sir.
With the corrected?
With the corrected, um, primary residence, um...
Five feet.
Five feet instead of five and a half.
Thank you, Kelly, appreciate it.
That'd be letters for the...
This is, this is, this is, needs to be done, it should be done as a blanket, why we don't? Any questions, do we need a further discussion, everybody has a good understanding? Motion to close the public discussion.
Motion to close.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve as requested.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
You got? Boy, your cloud was relieved, wasn't it?
Yeah, that's a number six.
I'm telling you that. Have y'all had a chance to look at the minutes?
Yes.
Yep.
Motion to approve?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I did see a typo, it, it wouldn't necessarily change the minutes other than, uh, looks like we have Mr. Cochran spelled with the A N, and then later in the body you have it with an E N.
Motion to approve with the corrections.
Corrections.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any further discuss, discussion, business, et cetera? Jeff took a tongue lach, lach. Motion to close, adjourn?
Motion to close.
Or motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
For listening, Joe, I'm just saying, don't you mean adjourn?
I was thinking about the guy that, and I should've pointed out, he wanted money.
Oh, yeah, you could tell, he wanted, he was like, he had to make a deal with me if you, if you would've done it the way I wanted you to, he would've had to make a deal with me.
He wanted money. And then when he admitted that he had five foot, oh, this is...
Well, he said, he said, I, I had criminally assisted that guy in skirting the county rules.
Yeah, that was like...
You did?
Yeah.
You, you, once you done, you cheated him out some money.
They're gonna get you outside, they don't wanna make a scene, make you... Well, I mean, it's exactly what Joe said, I mean, look, that's like being someone saying, hey, we're telling you this is the law, or you think this is law, but actually it says something different, but you haven't committed a crime, but you should've prosecuted it anyway. Oh, that was the law, like, what? We gotta, so, you know? Yeah.
But the county, if, if we would've made him tear that house down and then they would've found that...
Yeah, if y'all would've ruled that night and Jeff would've said what he said and then Steven and those guys would've went back and looked and said, no, they're wrong, we're gonna appeal, then they would've won on appeal, you know?
Oh, that was a, that was a no-brainer.
Like you said, it was almost one of those where...
Saying if you turned the door down and then figured it out later on.
Yeah, we, the county...
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, I don't know, but...
That was... I appreciate that being whatever happened to be done.
Well, and I think that's part of why, I think that's part of why...
There was, there was a chance that maybe it wasn't a set by law.
Look, if y'all go back and look and you can't find, if that's not the case, then I guess you're gonna maybe either make a deal with him or you're gonna come back...